Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the December 12th City of Escudero Planning Commission to order. If you all have eyes for the facts. May we have the roll? Chair Paul?
Yes, President.
Vice Chair Barbette?
Present.
Commissioner Barber?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Present.
Commissioner McCarron?
Here.
Commissioner Spear? Absent. Commissioner Wyler?
Here.
First item of business is approval of the minutes from November 28th, 2023. Does anyone, would anyone like to talk about that?
Yeah, Chairman Paul, I have a comment. Excuse me. On the project that we approved on the South Estadio Boulevard, we could make a motion for the planning commission to approve the resolution approving the project, but we added to that a recommendation to the city council that the project be exempt from CDF fees on account of them providing affordable rental housing. Shouldn't that language be included in the minutes?
So, we would ask the city attorney to comment, please.
I think that would actually become clarification. So, if you wanted to move that, that would be included.
Okay. Yeah, I believe the two no votes were specifically because of that.
I agree they were, and I'm looking at you. So, I will make the motion to approve the amendments with that additional language included.
End it.
It's been open. The vote is so. The vote is six oh to approve the mission minutes with corrections. Thank you. Next is written communications and oral communications. Do we have anyone who wanted to speak on an item not on the agenda? Alex is going to say no. No, we did not. Thank you. And public hearings, PL 23-0075 Master and Precise Development Plan. Presenter Jay Paul.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Tonight's agenda is a request is the master and precise development plans. That will require a recommendation by the planning commission and final consideration by the city council at a future public hearing. Includes a master precise development plan to convert the existing 8,000 square feet commercial building on Grand Avenue in the downtown historic downtown specific plan. The subject site is located on Grand, just east of Main Street. Currently, it's a two-story historic building. The bottom floor is currently occupied by two businesses. You have Grand Team Room and a design studio. The upper floor is vacant. It was used for offices and was the first hospital for Escudero. This is a view of the site from Escudero Boulevard. And this is the view from the alley. Most of the proposed improvements will be to the alley and to the existing parking and utility area to provide additional parking or provide parking for the project and to provide access and open space amenities for the upper story conversion. This is a close-up as the site you see it now. It currently has stairway access to the upper floor. And you can see the exterior doors. Those will be moved and the windows replaced and additional windows installed for the units. Site plan on the, this side is the existing building, two stories. The, and the upper story will be converted. Here in the existing parking lot, you can see the overhead as it is today. That will be converted or reconfigured to provide six covered parking spaces in that area. And those will be covered with a carport. The carport will also serve as the minimum recreation area for the parking parts, twelve hundred square feet, and the designated provider twelve hundred square feet. Useful open space for the project. The trash enclosure will need to be rebuilt and replaced in this area. The existing transformer will stay. And to provide access to the upper story, a new access way, stairs and landing will be provided in this area. One of the requests that's allowed through the master development plan is the request for reduction. A project would normally require eight spaces, seven for the units and one guest space. Because of the area available, they're trying to maximize the usability of that upper story to provide those four units, they request a reduction into parking spaces. Because this is in the downtown parking district, there is sufficient parking for guests and overflow to accommodate especially for the uses of the site. This is the reconfiguration of the upper floor. It will contain four units from 816 square feet to 934. All two bedrooms, they'll have one access from the exterior through the new stairway. The doors will be removed and new windows provided. It will be, interior access provided by this interior courtyard and this central area provides access to all units. We also have access to the commercial downstairs, but that not, won't be available to the units only for rooms purposes. For rooms purposes and for fire department, the front windows will have to be changed down to meet fire department rescue windows and also to meet the title of 25 Energy Systems. The improvements to the Grand Avenue mainly will be replacing the existing windows. And we had to go to the Historic Preservation Commission because this is a local structure for them to review the interior modifications and get a donation on the appropriateness. We had to also issue us some of the appropriateness. The HBC recommended five oh, voted five oh to approve the project as designed. They will replace these windows with similar designed windows. And we have a condition that the final design and the amount of panes and the materials can be approved by planning. So, it replicates closely the design that you see here to replicate that historic look on the building. For the rear, the rear is only visible through the alley and is blocked by coal buildings on the east and west. The improvements will include removal of the doors and replace those with new windows. Those windows will also be designed to replicate the panes, the pattern and design of those windows that will still have that historic feel and look. This is the view as seen from the alley. You'll have a new trash enclosure built to city design standards, stormwater standards, the new stairway, the railings on top, which will also add as the open space for the project. The colors will remain very similar with a new paint scheme. The doors will be brown and the windows arounds brown to match existing. There will also be pretty new sconce windows or lighting on the front and the back to match door and window covers. Historic preservation considered the project November 11th and did not have any concerns with the proposed design or use of the project and went five oh for recommending approval of the project. The project also qualifies for a reception from CEQA and there were no proceedings identified with this proposed conversion. Therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission got resolution number 20-23-24, recommend that the city council approve the project as a mission. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Jay. I'm sorry, I'm going in the wrong order again, I know. If anyone has a disclosure?
No disclosure.
Great. Does anyone have a question of staff?
I have two questions. Jay, help clarify the setbacks for me. I thought of taking Urban Planning 101 in college, but I didn't. So, I'm having trouble understanding on the front yard setbacks. The current requirements in specific plan are 14 feet from curb. The proposal is 14 feet to existing building. I don't understand the difference.
Well, I just wanted to, we can't move the building. So, I wanted to put in the details of request, how it did or did not conform to the current code standards and if deviations were needed. So, you're either required in the downtown specific plan to meet a setback from the property line or from the face of curb. Well, this is built right on the property line. But the face of curb, you can meet either one or 14 feet from the face of curb. I went and actually measured it myself, it's 14 feet, one inches, plus or minus. So, I clarified that, didn't need that estimate.
Really? Second question is, unless when you were giving your report regarding the historical preservation, you emphasized the project's historical significance. It had to go before the historical preservation committee. This brought a question to mind about something I've been concerned about, what I've been hearing through the quarters of City Hall. So, if it had to go before the preservation committee, then can I assume there's either a city policy or state law that requires?
It's in the downtown specific plan. If projects are, meet certain criteria on new construction or modification to local register structures, then they must be considered by the historical preservation commission who acts as a recommending body to the city planner or the director of development services. And they were looking at it for, they have to issue a certificate of compliance. So, they're looking at the appropriateness of the use, but mainly it's a higher level of design review to ensure that the proposed exterior improvements are consistent with the theme and design guidelines and the historic nature of the project. So, that was the reason why they had the HBC and it's a requirement of the downtown specific plan.
And that makes sense to me. The reason I'm asking this question, and I don't think you're in a position to answer this. I don't think Vicki's in a position to answer this. Perhaps only the city manager can answer this. But I'm understanding that the city council is considering abolishing the historical preservation committee. And I'm trying to wrap my head around how this is a necessary tool that we could live without and could proceed without this committee existing.
Sure. So, thank you for that question, Commissioner Barber. So, to clarify just what staff has stated, the project required a certificate of appropriateness by the historic preservation commission. I just want to clarify that. The boards and commissions subcommittee, which is a city council subcommittee, did direct staff to move forward with the dissolution of the historic preservation commission, which was announced at their November, I believe, 18th meeting, where our city clerks, our city clerk did provide them information and direction on that moving forward. And so, city staff have been directed to modify and review city ordinances for the essential removal of historic preservation commission, not historic preservation within the city.
Thank you, Vicki.
Veronica.
Oh, Veronica, I'm sorry. See, I'm so upset about this, I can't think straight. Thank you, Veronica.
Did anyone else have a question of staff?
I do. You know, as I was looking at this, I was thinking about exactly what Commissioner Barber brought up. And it seems to me that even though it's probably not our place to make even any sort of decision or recommendation, but I'd hate to see that commission go because I think they're actually an important part of the decision-making that goes on here in the city, especially being the specialty nature that they provide and their expertise. So, I do agree with Commissioner Barber that that is a concern. But secondly, one of the questions I did have is in the density transfer. And we're looking at transferring eight units over into the bank, for lack of a better term. What happens off in the future if somebody else comes along and they decide, look, we're going to intensify this residential use because at one point they were allowed 12 units. You know what, we want to have 12 units here and figure this however it works out. Can those eight units come back to this piece of problem?
Yes, they are available to go back to the applicants. It goes into a very large city pool. And I believe we have over 100 plus units available from various projects that have been approved that are in that pool that could be used. It requires city council approval through a plan development and a development agreement or other agreement acceptable to the city. So, there's a process to do that. They don't cost any money to get, but there's a process to give those units back.
Okay. As a follow-up, is there a reason why we're going through this process to put those eight units in the bank when they're really not maximizing out this site? Because it can go up another story, right, pursuant to the downtown specific plan. So, we could get another story and it could actually go even further back. Granted, there's not enough parking there today, so there wouldn't be in the future either. But why would we go through the process when there is still that potential to redevelop this in the future?
You know what, I want to have Veronica answer that question since she's more in tune with the nature of this world.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Wyler, for that question. So, the intent of the density transfer program, which is present in our downtown specific plan as well as our East Valley specific plan, is to ensure no net loss of units that were approved under the full build-out of the specific plan. So, it just provides accessibility to those units immediately instead of being dependent upon future redevelopment of a site, especially when a site becomes developed under an entitlement. There's usually a period of time at which it is unlikely that site will be redeveloped for a myriad of reasons, financing, costs, right, return of investment. And so, to ensure that those eight units are not just locked in at that site for future potential, potentially decades down the road, we put them into this pool that is available immediately for recalibration throughout the downtown specific plan area.
And are we seeing on our, and you know, there's not a whole lot of projects that are coming through, at least this body, for redevelopment and extra units in this, in this area. You know, other than polymer heights, are there other projects that have come forth that have contributed more units, whereas polymer heights really the only one? And I know I'm asking this question kind of out of the blue here, and I apologize. And if you don't have an answer, that's okay. I should have thought about it a little bit further than just the one question I was thinking about.
Fortunately, I happen to have that information available. So, over the course of the density transfer program in the downtown specific plan, which was created in 2019, we have had a total of five projects utilize it, four of which have been contributing to the bank and one of which involved a withdrawal of units. And the total available units at this point in time is 922 units.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. I have no other questions.
Okay. So, is there anyone from the public that would like to chime in? Deliberations, a motion?
I'll comment that I'm very excited about this project. I've been waiting decades to see residential come to downtown. I've been anxious for it ever since we opened up the North County Fair Mall and consumers were diverted in that direction. I think this is an excellent way to help revitalize downtown by bringing consumers to permanently lodge downtown, to patronize those businesses. So, unless there's further comment, I would make a motion to approve the project.
Ditto. There.
Same here.
This is my only comment.
Ditto as well.
Mr. Wyler, is that a second? If there's no further comment, I can certainly make a second.
Well, I just want to say that I think that this is a perfect spot with the expansion of John Paul degree and how those students are not going to be needing to drive anywhere. I mean, they're all, you know, taking Uber and walking places or riding a bike. So, this, I'm excited about this too. Perfect place for it.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, call for the vote. Voting has been open. Voting received six zero to approve the project. All right. Applicant, thank you very much for presenting. Good luck.
All right. Next is current business, discussion on the North County Mall. And I guess since I had this put on the agenda, I expected to go first. So, I spent a little bit of time out in the community, talking with people. And periodically, people ask me, you know, what's happening with the mall? What are we doing? And invariably, we talk about adding residential there. And everybody that I talked to says they agree that we should be adding residential to that site. I do get, there's, some conversations seem to emanate from City Hall that say, oh, my goodness, if we add residential, we would have to ask the voters to approve that. Oh, my goodness. And my response to that is, okay, we'll ask the voters to approve it. And I guess I just wanted an opportunity to try to get the planning commission's opinion out before the city leaders to see if there's consensus around something like that. Oh, I'm sorry. The other thing I wanted to mention was providing low-income housing. In my opinion, in the perfect world, the city already owns that property. The city could build, city-owned rental property and could dictate which of those are market rate and which one of those are subsidized. And we could help meet our arena numbers and meet our low-income numbers. I think it would be, would be very easy to make great strides in those, in those numbers using that available real estate. And who else would like to comment?
I have a question. Wasn't there, I'm not going to find the right language, but wasn't there a vote or whatever happens at the mall has to be voted on by the public? Is there something in place that says they have to do that? It has to be a vote? I thought there was.
Yeah, and maybe I'm not the right person to answer that. I don't know if Veronica is or isn't.
Veronica might know more than I do. I know there is an, my understanding is that there is an initiative that was passed that would require that it go to a vote if people have residential there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, it's an initiative?
I thought, yeah, I thought there was something like that that existed. I would like to see that happen. I would like to see it turn into One Paseo personally. I think anything considering the space that's available at North County Fair needs to really incorporate a lot of green space. I think we also need to have connections to the bike paths and trails that are surrounding the mall. Anything that does not incorporate those areas, to me, would be such an ignorant move on the part of developers to not understand what is taking place in other cities. So, my hope is that they, first off, take the roof off. The fact that we have closed space in this day and age is beyond me with all the fresh open air that every other development has now. I can't wait to see what they do.
I'll address, I'll add my comments to introducing residential to the mall. I not only think it's a good idea, I think it's vital. We need to reinvent the mall. The mall is not going to survive based on traditional foundations for retail to exist. And if we provide, if we create residential there, it's the same principle as what we're doing on Grand Avenue. We're providing a customer base there at the mall. It's going to help improve sales at the mall. It's going to help improve sales taxes. It's going to help provide the lease. We're holding the lease on the property. We're partners in the success of North County Fair Mall. It is being done elsewhere. It's being done for the Daly City in the north, down to Santa Ana in the south. Santa Ana's just recently approved 309 units into their main gate mall. Westminster is approving 3,000 units. It's happening from Arizona to Virginia. It has to happen here. If there has to be an election, fine. I'll help work on the campaign to get it. I could get that approved.
And David, in One Paseo did incorporate housing. So, One Paseo is office space, retail and housing, all mixed together, all paths that can lead you from one to the other on your bike or by walking, if you choose. But it's extraordinary. It's in Delmar Heights.
Okay, well, then both you and I can go door to door.
Yeah, I would highly recommend if anyone is not familiar with One Paseo, that they go out there and experience it.
So, I live in that district and I'm, I've actually, I actually work very closely with Nina, the general manager, in that we are getting office spaces there. So, office, you know, businesses are starting to occupy it. We are, well, I'm kind of selfish because I want to revitalize the mall because it's in my neighborhood. And so, I've reached out to Whole Foods, just trying to see what, you know, for the Nordstrom side, trying to revitalize it. So, I think as far as that residential, I think there is a place for that there because we're trying to get that to just be able to provide everything for everybody within an area. My only concern would be if we go overboard with too many residents, you know, with the traffic and just taking, I guess, the character away from people wanting to visit it because there's going to be a lot of residential. That's my only concern. And it is a concern for some people that I've spoken to that live in that area as well, but not the majority. Also, we're talking to more restaurants to come in, more high-end restaurants. We really are, we really need to revitalize it and people want to do it. So, I like, I love the idea. But yeah, we are working hard behind the scenes and we have reached out. And I've gone as far as saying, okay, what about a Sharp's Medical Clinic or something? You know, we don't have Sharp's here. What can we do? How can we get creative with that? But yes, I agree, residential, some residential. And then something that can be, I think of Eastlake, you know, how there's those areas and to where there is the mall, there are retail. And I have family out in Eastlake and you just have pockets of those in that size of a space that we have at the mall. And it works very well.
I guess I would totally endorse all of these conversations to this point. I do think multi-use is important and green space and the transit issues are really important, I think particularly if you're going to, as Carrie would like to see, less parking and more transit.
And the kids can walk to the high school and K-3.
Right.
Right there.
Yeah, I also live in this neighborhood and there are five schools within walking distance of the mall. So, and that's all levels from kindergarten, monastery, all the way up. So.
I guess I should add, right, I think every piece of infrastructure that's necessary already exists there, right?
Yeah. When Costco originally made the proposal and city council accepted that, in all honesty, I love Costco. Costco's great. It'd be a great generator of tags, but I never liked it there. I thought that in watching what happened down at UTC and it, you know, and how that mall got revitalized, and it is, it's quite the experience to go down there and walk through there. And again, it's open air. There's, I think that's an important component to make this someplace that people will want to go now that they just don't seem to as much anymore. The residential component, I think, is critical. We need the housing. I think that's a good location. And then, you know, the full analysis has to be done to see what the impacts are going to be as you intensify the use of this location, just to make sure that it's, you know, thought out well enough, not only aesthetically, but from the impact side of things as well. So, yeah, I would, I would love to see it redeveloped with residential and different shops pulling the roof off, those sort of things. I think that it's a jewel ready to be repolished. Veronica?
With the city holding the lease, I got her name, right? The city holding the lease, I mean, we have the investment in the mall and the success. So, in what role is the city playing and working with the ownership, the owners of the mall?
So in what role is the city playing in working with the ownership, the owners of the mall and helping the mall progress and improve? Is this a Dare question?
I'm curious to see what the city attorney was going to say. I have a response to that, but.
No, you can go ahead and respond. I'm, I was just going to say it might be more complicated than we can actually fully describe right at the moment because I don't even know the answer to all that. There is a complicated system with lease and all that. And I know at one point we had on the agenda that staff was going to bring to this commission sort of an explanation of the history of the North County Mall and explaining all the things about the proposition. I think it's probably limits the use and the lease and all that stuff. We haven't gotten to that yet. This came on the agenda first, so I'm just wondering if maybe we want to do that at some point. If you know more about the lease, go right ahead, Veronica.
I was going to echo a similar sentiment that the simplistic view of that is we have a real property division of the city in our, works with our economic development folks, and they are in contact with mall ownership and all leaseholders. So there is a discussion that is, that occurs between city staff and the mall owners, leaseholders, et cetera. But it is not something that I am privy to, and it would be a very, it's a very complicated process.
So I guess I want to add to that for a second. So because of the economic situation in Escondido and the need for more revenue, there was, there was presentation from city staff with ways to increase the revenue. And everything on the list was just a tax increase. There wasn't anything on the list that said, hey, let's build housing and own it and rent it. I mean, there's other communities that have rental property owned by the city, and that's part of their, their income base. The city receives rent from those buildings. And so Escondido already owning this site, I think that's a, that's a revenue for the city. So the real property people need to, need to bring that up and say, hey, this is what we can do. This is our, this is Escondido's property. Real property people need to manage the property to the best ability from a resource point of view for this, for the benefit of the city.
I do remember Dare, the request, I think it was, to have that, that presentation by staff, at least regarding the, just, that would highlight for us the complexity of leaseholders and all of that, like the range of relationships that currently exist. I think that would be really helpful, actually, to have a conversation like this following because I know it's really complicated. I've heard about it a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah. If you want, I know, Veronica, we had that on the agenda before. Commissioner wants, could have volunteered, Veronica could have put it on there again. But it does take a little bit of work because it is, it is not a simple history there.
Yes. Staff will add it back on to the TFA, and it will be dependent upon getting those real property folks to provide subject matter experts on those complexities. So most likely something that will happen after the new year, of course.
Anything else? Okay. The next item, future agenda items. Does anyone have something they would like to add to the agenda?
Yes. Veronica, could we, future agenda, address the historical preservation committee in case after discussion, we might want to make a recommendation to city council whether or not we think the committee should be retained?
We can add it as an item. We could do a informational presentation under current business to get recommendations, feedback. Eventually, if, if direction continues as it is moving currently, which is to amend the city's zoning ordinance as a result of the direction to dissolve HPC, then that modification to the zoning ordinance will come before the planning commission for your recommendation to council. So you will also have opportunity to further discuss it at that point as well, just so you're aware.
So I had a question on that, and I don't know how much we can discuss it with it not being on the agenda.
Discussing the HPC? Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so we probably, I think, yeah, we should have a discussion about it substantively, but we can certainly put it on the future agenda.
Right. Do you want to wait until they might change the ordinances to bring it to us, or you want them to bring us something sooner? I might like to have them off the pass.
Yes, I'd like to do it sooner as well. And that's the impression staff received. I just wanted to make it clear that the zoning amendment would have to come before commission as well.
I just want to see if there's enough support to get it on the agenda. I have at least two people say yes. I've got a question, though. Is this a directive that's already come from city council? That's my question. Well, no, I mean, is, I mean, has the train kind of left the station?
Yeah, I want to be careful because we didn't agendaize this, and so I want to be careful about the discussion.
I get it.
I believe Veronica did give an update earlier, though, that just stated what the committee did.
She said a subcommittee.
I think we should hold off on the discussion until we have agendaized.
Okay. Anything else for the agenda, future agenda? All right. Moral communications? No. Planning commissioners' report. I'd like to say it was a great Christmas parade. Anybody else? The parade wasn't in the morning. Well, that, where I, where I come from, that's in the morning. I don't have a report, just an observation when I was coming to the meeting today. So I was driving westbound on Grand, and I was at the stoplight at Center City Parkway looking, I mean, not westbound, I'm sorry, eastbound. And so I'm looking right at the Escondido sign and all the lights, because there's different colored lights, and I think they were on the light poles. And it just looked so welcoming coming into the downtown, and then you had the lights that cross over the street. So I just wanted to comment that if you haven't had the opportunity, drive eastbound on Grand at night, just to go, you know what? This was such a welcoming feeling when I was rolling into the downtown.
I saw it last night, you're right.
Yeah. And so, anyway, it was just an observation on the way in.
So just kudos to city staff for making that happen.
That was the other thing I was thinking, because I did want to, if there's a way that the message can get out to whomever's idea it was and whoever put all the work in, if that could get to that group, that would be fabulous.
And I would say, my husband and I did go out to dinner. We've been going down, out to dinner more on Grand Avenue. And the lights, you see more people out there because it feels safer. And, you know, there's music being played, people are just walking, and so I would like to encourage city to do that all the way down Grand because where the lights were, that's where the people were congregating.
All right. Next item, city planners' report.
Yes. So as you all are aware, this is the last planning commission meeting of 2023. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be January ninth. We anticipate holding a January ninth meeting, so staff will update you if that changes before the new year. And we anticipate some future policy work regarding pre-approved ADU program, primarily informational, but eventually policy-related, as well as short-term rentals and objective design standards. So these are things that would come to you either as a current business item for information and feedback, and eventually an action to be taken.
Meeting adjourned.
Happy holidays to all.